With the weather, so I'll be filling in for him tonight. I also want to acknowledge the death of one of our council members, Mary Jill Bringley, and keep her in your prayers, her family. Roll call.
Bringley.
Could we have just a moment of silence in respect to Mary Jill's passing?
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
And Althoff is absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one thing we have to add to the agenda, and that's that we're gonna add a work session for the next meeting, so we'll put that on the end of our meeting. Public input, public input is intended approval of the agenda.
Yep. I move to approve the agenda with the addition of consent agenda item I, the meeting or work session before our next meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Montgomery, second by Lundell, to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers will not address topics that are subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule a consideration of the item on a future agenda. Diane.
Diane Johnson, 113 Perrmose Lane, Cannon Falls. Speaking on the thing that is on the agenda for night, consideration of the city going in with the EDA, do I have the initials right, in terms of the purchase of the Mulva Hill property, I'm concerned about that. Number one, we already own the property on Samstone Ridge. Earlier this year, when the developers, I think it was this year, last year, wanted to develop that there, but said they didn't have enough money to do the infrastructure, the city said, no, we don't have money for infrastructure. On property we already own, and so that was turned down, and of course, they were not able to build. So I guess, if we already own property, we have developers who are willing to build housing for us if we put in infrastructure. Why we wouldn't start with that property as opposed to getting too involved in a property that we don't own yet? Also, the asking price of this piece of land here at $800,000 seems to be fairly, a lot more than what the assessed market value is, which is $400,000, $500,000, according to last property tax bill. It's not that I don't want to see this property developed. I know when they were talking about putting the apartment building that's at the Cannon Ball spot, I thought one of the alternate places for it would be on this property that would then kind of spur development of the housing around it, but that was not considered at that time. The other thing is, when we talk about the city not being able to afford infrastructure on one piece of land, guaranteeing or promising that we'd help with it on this piece of land, and at the same time, we're gonna have a public hearing tonight where every time we put in or reduce streets, we're charging our, assessing our property owners 20%, which I understand is what we do, but at the same time, it almost seems a little unfair to me that we are making certain property owners pay, and because whoever owns this property now hasn't been able to develop it. I know they've been trying for at least five years, if not more, because I looked at that land when it was on the Cannon Realty website, and they had it all laid out, probably not plotted officially, but they had it all laid out with little streets and little lots and double lots, and I thought, oh, that might be a nice place to buy and build a house. At this point, I'm really glad I didn't go that way, being nothing's there except that one little string of houses. So I would ask that you don't act on that proposal tonight. Really would ask if you could delay that until consideration until January or February, when the new council's on, because quite frankly, it's the new council that will have to follow through on all of this, and I would like to see more time to really study it more.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public input. Oh, okay. Okay, public hearings. The first one is the 2023 final budget and levy public hearing. Neil?
Thank you. I know we've talked about this in quite length, and it's been going on for several months, and I apologize if you guys are getting sick of it, but this is the last time I'm gonna review this, and then we'll adopt a resolution at the next meeting, so we'll be taking no action tonight. The preliminary budget was adopted on September 6th, and as the council knows, once you adopt the preliminary budget, we cannot increase our levy, but we can decrease our levy. I just want to hit some of the highlights. As we go through it, I got a list of about 10 highlights that I know you've seen before, but I want to present it to the public. In 2023, we have a 1% salary adjustment one time in July, and then a 1% in December. We were very fortunate to have a small increase of 3.47% on our health insurance. I've heard a lot of horror stories out there that there's been some major increases, so we kind of lucked out there this year. I don't expect that to happen every year, but this year in 2023, we're gonna do okay. When I got here, about three years ago, we, the council had decided to implement a mill and overlay budget line item. You put $130,000 in it at that time, and we have been growing that every year incrementally. And this year, we put another $25,000 in it, but I'm afraid that $25,000 is gonna be eaten up by inflation, when, once we've been talking about batuminous prices, but if we didn't increase it, we'd just be going backwards. So that was increased from $175,000 to $200,000 for mill and overlay of the streets. Dan picks out what projects we're gonna do, and we keep it within that range. One good thing is, and I see Nicole is on here on Zoom, is that our library building bond is the last year, it's completed now, so in 2023, we won't have that to pay. That was $78,000. What with that said, a couple years ago, or was it last year, we bought a fire truck, and we burned through our capital money on the, in the fire department, and although we paid cash, it drained the account. So this year, we put $121,000 in the fire capital account to build another pot, because I think we have another truck coming up here in a few years that we're gonna need to pay One of the things that we worry about, and I know motor fuel, gas, and utilities, gas is coming back down, but we don't know where it's gonna land. We're still volatile out there, so as department heads went through their budgeting, they did increase the gas and the utilities considerably, and I concurred with them, and it's always better to have a budget reserved than to be wondering where you're gonna get your gas and your utilities from. One of the things that, and this really surprised me when you hear today that the state of Minnesota's got, what, a $17 billion revenue surplus?
Forecast.
Forecast. Our local government aid comes from the state, and they decided that they could increase ours $3,500. I'd like to thank them for that. Maybe a little sarcastic there, but when you have that type of surplus, it seems like they could come to the table a little bit. Invenergy gives us a dollars in lieu of taxes, their increase is actually $12,130 for 2023, so that'll be coming in, and that's just city, they have, school district gets a little, and county gets a little, and we get a little out of that in lieu of taxes. As you know, WHKS and the city, and we've been working on a, in fact, there's a public hearing tonight on a $2 million sewer bridge and street reconstruction project that we're working on. That's for 2023, so that'll be coming up. And then, I don't know, a few, a couple months ago, we talked and had a work session on whether we should be doing any increases in the storm, the sewer, and the water fees. You decided to do a 1% on that, it generates through the three funds, $24,000. We hadn't had a water and sewer increase since I got here, so a 1% isn't an awful lot, it's, you know, compared to what inflation has done. So I think, I think that was a pretty fair shake as far as that goes. So on the, if you look on the backside of your levy sheet, you know, the proposed levy for 2023 is $3,306,956, which is a 3.49% increase from 2022. The date for the adoption is at our next council meeting. I'll present a resolution for you guys to adopt, that's on December 20th at 6:30. And just some highlights of general fund, et cetera. The general fund went up on our total levy, $111,000, which is the 3.4%. Our bond levies actually went down $3,700. As you know, we had the one fall off, but we also had some move up, so. And then our non-general fund levies, the library, the fire department, the economic development fund, went up $14,000 for 2.65%. So that's kind of the generalities of the budget without going line item for line item. I know, like I said, you've studied this, you've talked it over, you've reviewed it, and now we're at the final stretch. So I think that's what I got there. Steve.
Okay. Thanks, Neil. About this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak to our proposed budget, now is the time. Is there anybody here? Becky.
Good evening. I'm Becky Youngmark. First, I'd like to extend my deepest sympathies in the passing of Mary Jill. She was dedicated to serving the city, and I'm sure she's gonna be greatly missed. I'm here to ask why you're increasing the water sewer bills. I know 1% doesn't seem like much to you, but it is. 20 years ago, when the bond passed for the water treatment facility, I remember voters being told it was a 20-year bond in anticipation of our city growth by several thousand people, and that once the bond was paid off, lower prices would be restored. That bond was paid off this year, our resident population increased by less than 200 people in the last 10 years, which is a whole nother set of problems. Yet the council's wanting to increase our extremely high water sewer rates. According to resolution number 2283, rate changes were effective August 1st of 2017, and from 2017 to 2019, our rates jumped 27 cents per 100 cubic foot for water with a base increase of 65 cents per month. Our sewer rates went from an increase of $2.89 per month with a dollar one cent per cubic foot from 2017 to 2019. And for stormwater charges, it increased 34 cents per residential acre during those same three years. With the horrible rise in inflation, families are struggling to pay their rent, their utilities, their groceries, and their gas. Another hike of 1% for water and sewer to bring in additional $24,000 for the city in the 2023 budget creates more hardship for the residents of the community. I ask that the increase in the water sewer rates be postponed until 2024. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wanting to address the proposed budget? Third and last call, anybody want to address the proposed 2023 budget? I'm gonna call, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the budget. Council.
No actions needed tonight?
No actions needed tonight. So let's move on to resolution. Go. Resolution 2658, ordering improvements and directing preparation of final plans and specifications. Bill.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Let me get hooked up here. All right, Mayor, council, and public, tonight is our hearing for our 2023 street and utility project. So tonight, what we'll be doing is going over kind of what I'll call a high-level outline of the feasibility report, that's also in your packet tonight, that the council has previously reviewed and approved. Tonight, what we'll be doing is we'll be following Minnesota statute 429 procedures, so it's a very prescriptive process, so we'll go through those steps. At the end of the presentation, then, the public will have a chance to come up and give you input, and we'll review this as we go, but the end of the goal tonight is there's a resolution in your packet which would order the improvement and move forward. So tonight is what I call the thumbs up or thumbs down, are you proceeding or not proceeding? Some of the provisions of assessments, dollar amounts, term, things like that, will be set later on, so tonight, this is the vote where you have to decide by a supermajority, so in this case, tonight, a four-fifth majority, to proceed or not to proceed. So with that intro, we'll get into the items. So we'll talk about the area background, what we're proposing to do, get that assessment process, what we're proposing for a schedule, the cost, and then we'll end with public comments. Okay, so project area, so all the properties that are highlighted, colored, were, did receive notices that Sarah sent out to them, notifying them of the hearing tonight, also notifying them of their proposed assessment amount. The colors on the map, the red stands for street assessments, so people, properties of budding, a row that will be improved, I have a red. If you have green on your property, that means that sewer will also be replaced, you'll be assessed for sanitary sewer, and blue is water. So if you'll notice, a lot of the lots have all three, so that basically then there's an assessment amount for each one. Some lots, you know, like the church in the north, up in the northwest, you know, there's no street there, so it's just sewer and water, and so on. So again, that's our project, project area. And then we'll refer back to the little numbers that are a little hard to see here, that corresponds to our assessment rule, which has the names and all the detailed parcel information. Okay, so going back on the background, so the city council did review the full report on November 1st. You did at that meeting approve that and then set this hearing date tonight. The council also held a workshop on November 15th, and the reason that we held the workshop is, I guess I'll jump back here, if you'll notice, you know, one of the things like in a normal, I shouldn't say a normal, but in a, you know, a typical subdivision, the lot sizes are all very similar, and that means the assessments are similar. Here we have some really big lots, we have a lot of corner lots, that makes assessments challenging to do because the assessments get large. So we had that workshop to discuss that, so I want to make sure, you know, the public knows that we did discuss that, and what we really discussed was, you know, we have an ordinance that specifies how we are to assess. So what we did is we reviewed that at that workshop, we discussed, should we do something different? You know, there's some different ideas, different options, and ultimately, we decided to proceed per our ordinance, so what we have tonight is, you know, follows that. So the council, obviously, you'll be able to hear input tonight, you are not bound by that, you can, up until the final assessment, you can modify or change those items. So again, just wanted to lay a little bit of the background out for, particularly for the public who may not have heard that. Okay, so why are we doing this project? Well, really, it kind of starts with the fourth bullet down there, that's the sanitary sewer bridge, so in this area, right here, oops, right here, the sanitary sewer for this whole area actually crosses over the river, about 10 feet over the river, on literally a bridge to transport the sewer. So that's been, it's aging, it's getting old, and flooding events, trees stacked up against that, and there is the concern that that bridge at some point will fail. So the intent of this project is that a lift station or the ability to pump sewage will be installed on the north side, and a new pipe will be drilled underneath the river. So that was the first item. And then along, and then once we do that, then we are, wanted to address the other items. We have other old sewer, old water main, the streets in poor condition, we don't have good drainage in some areas, so basically, we'll be rebuilding the roads, sewer and water along with this, and adding stormwater treatment, which is a requirement by statute now. So one of the things that, just to make clear to the public, is the sanitary sewer bridge is not, you know, the items, the costs associated with that are not being assessed. Same thing with the stormwater treatment, you know, stormwater ponds, that's not being assessed as well. So your policy dictates that just the road, the sewer, and the water are assessed. Also, oversizing of pipes is not assessed as well, so basically, it's the base size of eight-inch sewer, eight-inch water. So again, that's all spelled out in more detail in that feasibility report. Okay, so what is being proposed? So what's being proposed is that we'll have new streets, new pavement, that'll be 32 feet wide, we'll add curb and gutter to help with drainage. Again, as I mentioned earlier, all the sewer, all the water, we'll be adding storm sewer as well. This is intended to be the first of two phases of projects, so tentatively, two years from now, the area to the north of here, there's some drainage issues, that area drains through here, so we, storm sewer will be extended up to that area, but wanted to point out that that storm sewer to serve that area to the north is not being assessed. The only portion of the storm sewer that's being assessed is the portion that's collecting the drainage, basically in front of people's houses. As I mentioned earlier, then, that stormwater basin, and then that sewer bridge, okay, those are the, those are the main items in this. All right, so when a city's gonna do assessments, we have to follow Minnesota statute 429, so we have to, we are required to explain that, so we'll take a little bit of time tonight just to explain that. So number one, the city council, you have to determine a need for a project, you have done that this past summer. Then, an engineering study needs to be performed, which it has, and then that engineering study was the one that was reviewed at the November 1st city council meeting. So tonight is the hearing where you have to gather inputs, so this is where residents, again, can offer their input on the project, and then ultimately, tonight, you have a resolution before you, as I mentioned earlier, you'll have to decide to move forward or not, and that does require a four-fifth majority of the council members that are here. Okay? Second part of the process, then, so later on, on your agenda tonight, then, if you do proceed with that first resolution, then you would authorize the preparation of final plans and specifications, so at this point, you know, the final design details, you know, the plans aren't prepared, so we'll take the next couple months to prepare that. Then the project is publicly bid, and then this next step is important. So up until now, at this point, all costs are estimates, so we don't have a contract, or we don't have bids, so everything is preliminary, I want to really stress that, and particularly right now with the volatility in prices, inflation, things like that. So we don't actually know the final amount until we open those bids. So we will open bids, then we will have a final assessment hearing. So at that hearing, then, people will know their actual final amount, now tonight's an estimate, and we hope that estimate's pretty accurate, but at that hearing, then, the members of the public can present evidence to the council why that assessment value did not provide a benefit to their property. So the statute says that if we assess somebody, that the value of the assessment, their property must go up that amount in value. Okay, so that's not tonight, so obviously, people can offer input into the project, but anything to do with the value of the assessment, contesting the assessment, that would occur at a later date. So you are the body of government that hears that assessment. If someone would wanted to appeal that, they would appeal that to district court, but that would occur in the spring, so tonight, again, is not that meeting. So at that hearing in the spring, then, after that is over, you would award a construction contract. The project is intended then to be built in the 2023 construction season, and then, and then, well, I guess that would be, had to be done. One of the things, you know, there are some things we have talked about as far as materials, we're gonna be able to get things, you know, et cetera, to build a lift station, and everything appears that we'd be able to get, other than some of the controls for the lift station we're hearing, there still are some long lead times, but we think we'll be early enough, but that is one of my concerns moving forward, that again, there's still some shortages of materials, you know, really across the whole nation, across the globe, so. Okay, so what, so these are the specific dates, so I mentioned, so again, the hearing, tonight, you're gonna consider ordering at those, there's those dates. The final assessment hearing would be in May, either, obviously, your first or your, one of your two meetings in May, with construction in June, and then complete construction fall. And then I want to put a little bit of a tentative twist on that complete construction, because until we get plans done and really lock in some suppliers and things like that, we won't know that here for a couple months, so. Next time, when everybody Next item what everybody's probably most interested in is what are the costs of this project? Neil mentioned a little earlier in the budget. This project is estimated at just under $2.1 million. According to your assessment policy, the vast majority of this project is not assessed. It's 20% of the allowable costs, so that means that $264,000 would be assessed to the budding properties. The council does have a few methods you can choose. Staff is recommending we use what's called the adjusted front foot method. That is because of the various different sizes of the lots. It's really the only practical method. So adjusted front foot method calls for, it's a formula that is, it was in the report, but basically, it's 100% of the short side, and then half of the long side, up to 150 feet. Utilities on the short side, no utilities for the first 150 feet. So again, I'm kind of rattling that off kind of quickly, but there's a formula that we follow to determine that. Okay, so what that does then is that the assessments, they vary, because again, the size, it's really based on the front footage, and we have a couple of unique properties, you know, where we have a couple of exceptions. But the assessment ranges from $3,800 to $26,400. So we did spend quite a bit of time talking about that because I think the council and staff recognize that we have some large lots here, so that have some, some larger assessments. So there's, the individual assessment amounts were sent out. I do have that spreadsheet here. I think we looked at that workshop if questions would arise on that. So Acting Mayor, at that point, that's the end of the presentation. So at this point, I will sit down and we will move to the public comment portion. And I don't know if it's helpful, you know, just leave this up here with a map, just in case anybody has any questions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak to this improvement, come on up to the mic, your name, and give us your input. Anybody wishing to speak to the proposed street improvement? Second call, anybody wishing to speak to the proposed city improvement? Third and last call, anybody wishing to speak to the proposed street improvement? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2658.
I'll second. Calls by Montgomery, second by Duncan, to approve. Lost my number here. What is it?
2658.
Any further discussion? I would just like to say that there's some streets in bad condition down there. I think it's time, it's time to improve the, those streets, straighten out some of the, some of the boundaries, plus we need to put that pipe across underneath there before that sewer bridge, which carries everything from that side of town across. We really need to get going on that. That's, that's all I have to say. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. On the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. So I will list them. Just-in-correct claims, counting period ending December 1st, 2022. Meeting minutes for November 15th, 2022. Meeting minutes for November 15th, 2022, council meeting, I should say, B was for the council work session. D, approved amended, approve amended 2023 street and utility project professional service agreement. E, resolution 2656, accepting a monetary donation of $3,104 from Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association. F, resolution 2657, approving conditional use permit for 3163364th Avenue. G, approve quote from Precision Landscape and Tree. H, approve water leak credit. And I approve, what did I say? Work session for Valley View at our next council meeting on December 20th. Is there any item or items that the council wants to bring down?
I will pull down G, please.
G? The screen just went kawappy. Quote from Precision Landscape and Tree. We'll call that council business B. I would like to pull down A, just-in-correct claims. So that'll be council business C. Anything else anybody would like to bring down? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the council agenda, except for those two items.
So moved.
Second. Approved by Derek.
Yep.
Second by Montgomery to approve the consent agenda, except for the aforementioned items. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Carries. Okay, so, let's see. Next thing is Hardwood Estates Mulva Hill property acquisition.
Good evening. How are you?
Dan.
Council.
Well.
Okay, so we are going to talk about the Mulva Hill property, AKA Hardwood Estates. So on the, this is the city map here, so the area in pink is where the Hardwood Estates or Mulva Hill property resides on the eastern part of town. Here's an aerial map. So the EDA has been discussing this property for quite some time. I know that, actually, back in 2018, I think some discussions had started, which precedes most of us, I think, that were on the EDA board, with Glenn Mulva Hill that owns the property. So anyway, back and forth, things have, discussions have kind of flared back and forth. And anyway, housing has been a big discussion on our strategic planning for the last couple of years especially. And, you know, over the last few years, our comprehensive plan for this city, actually, the last one that we had done and approved from city council was back in 2003. So needless to say, it's pretty old. But one thing that hasn't changed significantly is the population in that 20 years. So we've had quite a few projects and quite a few developers and quite a few different plans that were supposed to have happened within that 20 years, that never came to fruition as far as different developments. And what I wanted to show you was just some statistics that I pulled from the 2020 census. Let me just blow this up so you can see it a little bit better. So this is from the actual U.S. census, and this is from Cannon Falls versus, so 2010 to 2020. And this is Cannon Falls and some of our neighboring communities, up and down the 52 corridor, but then also I included Hampton, Goodhue, and Randolph. Well, I included Goodhue and Randolph because those are a couple of the different school districts that are kind of cannibalizing some of our students. So I included them as well, even though they're not on the same 52 corridor as we are. But as you can see, Cannon Falls has, you know, even though we're that largest community amongst those that are listed, we've had the lowest amount of growth within that time period. So I guess what we've been discussing, I mean, it's, we've seen that, we've known that over the time, but the EDA is kind of, we've been waiting, and we've been hearing from different developers and builders over the years that, yep, we're going to build, we're going to build, we're going to build, but yet we have yet to see a significant amount of rooftops happening. So the EDA has decided that it's maybe in our best interest to just take the risk and to purchase a property ourselves and to develop the property. Another significant piece of information that I wanted to share with you is that, according to our comprehensive plan, the population growth that they had anticipated, based on the growth that we were seeing back in the late 90s and early 2000s, was that by 2015, they had projected that our population was supposed to be 7,100 at that time. So in 2001, just for another little tidbit or little snack of trivia, is that our new water treatment plant was built at that time. And at this point, and they had built it to, based on these projections, and right now, we're using just roughly about half of its capacity that it was built at, based on these projections. So we were positioned and poised for this kind of growth at that time, but yet now we've got a 20-year-old water treatment facility plant that we're not even using at its capacity. So the EDA did meet, we did a joint session with the, with the finance committee earlier this, or it was in November. And anyway, we'd made a presentation. We do have a signed purchase agreement from Glenn Mulva Hill regarding this property. And we would like to, we did get the support from the finance committee to purchase the property. What we would like to do is, the EDA does have the funds to put down a down payment for the property and make the first payment for, in 2023. We will be doing a four-year contract for deed. But what we would need from the city, what we're asking, is that we could get some financial support to help put in the infrastructure and also do the engineering, pay for some of the engineering and work that would have to be done in order for us to get the grading done, the plating done, so that we could start building, or so that we could start selling lots. So right now, in '23, with interest rates going up and the prices of homes haven't really evened out with the interest rates, '23 would actually be a really great year for us to start putting in the infrastructure and getting this plan together so that we can start selling lots, so that we can start seeing some rooftops, actually, in 2024. So I have more information, more statistics that I could certainly bore you with if you're interested, that's from the comprehensive plan, that I could show you. And a lot of it is based on the information, you know, the different dwelling units that were supposed to have been built within, you know, between 2003 and 2008, different units that were supposed to be built, whoops, within, in 2013, or between 2008 and 2013, showing what the population was supposed to have been. Again, these are things that didn't happen with the private sector that were supposed to have happened. Some of them were plans that had gone through planning commission, they were approved, they were ready to go, and they never happened. Sandstone Ridge was one that was ready to rock, streets, infrastructure, everything was in, and then it failed. So, you know, so we've had different, different things start and stop, but we just feel that this is a really great opportunity, and I think that it would be, yes, it is a risk, but I think that it's something that we definitely need to do ourselves if we actually want to see our community grow and see our schools continue to grow. We've got great programs, we've got wonderful staff, and we've got great amenities that I think supersede a lot of the other communities that are growing along, around us. And there's no reason that we shouldn't be at the top of that list for growth. So I'll take any questions you may have.
Do you know approximately how many units we'd be looking at in this?
The original property, when it was platted, that had gotten approved, I'm trying to think of what year, that may be 2018, I think is when maybe that, that original, that one Hardwood Estates was platted. That was before the 24 was officially in. So now the 24, that 24 connection is in, I think that shaved off a few of the lots. So at that time, there were about 109 lots that were platted in there. So I think that it would be hovering around 100, possibly.
Have you gotten any, knowing that you're always on the phone, have you got any interest from local builders that are excited about moving ahead with this?
You know, I'm glad that you asked that, Steve, because what we would be interested in doing is that, you know, we would want builders to purchase the lots and build and sell, you know? So that's what we would want to happen. You know, we wouldn't look at just, you know, we wouldn't just look for one builder necessarily to come in. So I mean, if, you know, someone wanted to come in and they wanted to buy up, you know, six lots and just sit on them, that's not what we're looking for. You know, we're looking for multiple people to come in and buy. We're looking for, you know, it to be, we've talked about different ideas as to what it would look like, you know? I mean, it could be some houses for rent, it could be townhomes, it could be single-family homes, you know? So it could be some different mixed-use type of housing. It being right across from the school. I know that Superintendent Sampson is very excited about this possibility because there is, there's no more ideal space in, or place in town than this development for families to build. Minnesota, or MINDAT, does have a program, Safe Routes to School, so that that would also offer some funding that we could apply for with this project, that we could also build into the planning, that whether it's a route, a tunnel, you know, or route under the, under the 19 to have a bike and walk path underneath, there would be that type of route to school. But there's those types of things that we can incorporate into the planning as well.
Okay, Laura, there was, Diane made a comment in public input about city paying money for infrastructure. Could you explain, so that everybody can understand, how it is that the EDA will be paying the city back as we forward the money?
Yep. So when the infrastructure is put in, what would happen is that the, the cost for that would actually get worked into the price of the lot, and then when the lot is sold, then those costs get recouped back to the city. And so I will actually show, I will show this, just to, I mean, just to understand that the EDA does have assets in its account, so we're not just coming to mom and dad for some money. We actually do have some funds available. It's just that we wouldn't have enough to make, you know, purchase it all at once. So again, the So again, the purchase agreement is a four-year contract for deed, we would do a $200,000 down payment right now, and then it would be a $169,000 payment for the next four years. But the EDA, we would keep some money in our revolving loan funds that we could help out businesses for whatever reason, whatever they would need. We do have some loans coming due within 2006, or before 2026, so that's another $200,000 that we would have coming in. We have some contingent land sales, and then we also have another couple properties that would possibly be coming in. So we do have about $700,000 that we would have coming in, but, but to your question, Bill, we would need some of the money from the city, you know, just to kind of help get us jump-started to get some of those upfront costs done, but as we sell the property, the interfund loan, basically, that we're asking for the city, we would pay you back as we sold those lots off. And one other piece of the purchase agreement is that Mulvihill has included, one of the conditions or terms of the loan is that if we were, if a developer were to come in and say, hey, I want to buy 20 acres of that 44 acres to do something myself and build, he will release that, those, that acreage as part of the terms. So, or if we sell, if we develop Phase One and develop those acres, he will release that part of the deed.
Right, I, I did want to mention, we had done a similar thing, we had advanced the Historical Society some money to purchase the home adjacent to it, and they're paying us back over time. This is a similar type thing, only on, obviously, a much larger scale, but, so it's not that the city is giving away money to this group or that group, we are being reimbursed, so.
Correct.
To make everybody aware of that.
One worry I maybe would have, if this didn't work for a private developer, like if there were issues that no one wanted to do it, what, what issues would we have that, you know, would make us be able to do it that a private developer wouldn't? Like, does that make sense? Like, this has sat empty for so long, I'm sure it's been looked at, and for whatever reason, nobody wanted to develop it.
Well, and I think that because it's such a large chunk of land, I think that probably it would be the infrastructure, and I guess I'm not an engineer, so I guess I would maybe defer to Bill. I go, Bill, would you maybe have something to add to?
I, I think as far as development costs, it's slightly higher than an average lot, but I just maybe, I'll go off a little bit sideways here, you know, Neil and I have been asked various questions about this property, and the short version is, we've talked to other developers about would they be willing to do this, and the answer quite simply has been, we have other properties closer to Rochester that we can do first. That's, that's been the thing we've heard over and over, that there's just more profit there, so that's, that's probably the main thing I've heard.
Yeah, I just don't want to get stuck with something like Sandstone again, where something happens that we can't finish it. One other thing, we do have the, I think it's the Hayes annexation on the north end of town, that's going to be, you know, hopefully considerable size, too. Are we worried that maybe there'll be, believe it or not, too many buildable lots coming in at once, or?
You know, that is, I'm glad that you did ask that question, Derek, because they, you know, we have thought about that, competing with the private sector. The one thing that we have talked about in our EDA meetings is that that is such a specific type of home that they are building in the, what are they called, the Carlson Bluff, Carlson Farm Bluffs, or the Greensmith, the Greensmith Development, because they are environmental-friendly electric homes. So they're a smaller, smaller footprint, they're a smaller square footage, and they're electric homes. So they are going to be a smaller home with a much higher price point and for a very specific type of person. Whereas these homes that would be built across from the school are going to be more fam, not that the, not that the Greensmith is not going to be family-friendly, I don't mean to say, but I think it's going to be two different markets, you know, so, you know, you think of the, they'll be a little bit higher price point, like I said, but they will be a little more secluded, you know, I mean, they're going to have, you know, a really more protected type of area, and the ones that are by the school are going to want that proximity to the school, or they're going to want that really quick access, you know, to 52 or to Red Wing or whatever it might be. So I think it's going to be a totally different market, but we definitely have considered that, because we didn't want to, I mean, we just, we get this great chunk of land annexed and we've got this great developer, and we certainly don't want to now compete with him and chase him out, so, but thank you for asking that. Anything else?
Can you shed any light as to how the $800,000 purchase price was derived?
That was, so it was listed at, I think, 850, I think is what it was listed at when it was on the market. Glenn did not renew his contract, and so he's, he was willing to do, instead of a one-time buyout, he was willing to do a contract for deed over the four years with a down payment and then do a 5% interest rate on it. So he was willing to, and so he's kind of sticking his neck out, you know, as far as taking that four-year or five-year actually buyout instead, so that's, that's how that worked.
What, I think that, what works for me and, when we talked about it at the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Was it, we were talking to bankers that were sitting right down on the seats there, and I guess if, if two bankers, among other people, can agree that it's going to pencil out, I guess, time you got a listener to professionals, too, a little bit.
And, and the Finance Committee, both Steve and I had asked Neil if the city could handle, you know, the project, and did we have the money to kind of give it in advance, and Neil was comfortable with that, so the Finance Committee wanted to move this forward.
So if there's, if there aren't any other questions, I guess I would, you know, I, I wish that I could say that I had a firm number, you know, to ask for, I don't, but I guess the EDA is asking for your support, and, you know, as we're able to get firmer costs and whatnot, like I said, I mean, we would be able to close on the property at this year with our $200,000 down payment. And like I said, we'll for sure be able to do our first-year payment, which should be at the end of 2023, next year, and we would be able to start getting things going in '23, so I'll leave it to you.
Thanks, Laura.
You're welcome.
Neil, how, how do you want this handled, just a motion to move this forward? Okay. Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to support this, this project and move it forward.
A second.
You second?
Me.
Derek seconded.
Motion by Bill, second by Derek, to move the hardwood estates Mulvihill property acquisition forward. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Motion carries. Council Business B is Precision Landscape and Tree. Laura?
I just wanted to clarify a couple things. Can we define what clean wood is? Maybe I just don't know.
I asked that.
I had that same question. So definition of clean wood is wood that has not been started on fire.
Okay.
So we haven't had any fires, we haven't attempted to burn anything down there, so we have all clean wood.
So Dan, they're, they're going to grind all that wood then and take it away for whatever use they're going to use it for, is that correct?
Correct, he's found a market for the wood chips, so they'll grind and haul.
And that includes the big, the big stuff?
So I had that question also, about big stumps or big, you know, big trunks that were left, and they will break up the big trunks with the excavator, and they will fit it into the grinder. So he's a, he's got an opening in his schedule, I think he's got a market for this wood, he would come tomorrow, so.
Does it give an idea of how long it'll take?
He thought this was a fairly small job compared to some he's done, he was thinking three to four days.
Certainly solves a, a big problem for us.
I think it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, we've been talking about it for a while, obviously, it's an issue, we still need to talk about how we're going to handle commercial haulers in the future, right? I will admit that I am disappointed that we're ending up paying more than we would have if we would have just had it taken care of by Clinton in the beginning, but.
I've learned a lot about wood grinding in the last six months.
Yeah, so that disappoints me, but we're here, did we ask Clinton by any chance if he was interested in this?
I did not, this, this party came to Public Works. So I thought that sounded like a fair price, there's no time limit on it, there's, there's no repair limitations, nothing like that, it's just strictly setting up, grinding, hauling out, and, and leaving, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Precision Landscape and Tree.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, to approve the quote by Precision Landscape and Tree. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Okay, item number C is, I want to talk to Jeff, just and correct claims. We had some excessive, not excessive, a lot of bills for squad repair totaled around $5,300. One was on Squad 451, one was 2018, and one was a 2017. Is that a typical?
That's just another month in Cannon Falls. No. The, what you're seeing, what you're seeing coming through are the repairs for hail repair. Most of those are covered through the league's insurance. If you recall, we had a hailstorm that affected the, the city earlier this spring. The squads are just more complicated to get repaired, because we had to get all the graphics removed, if you recall, around midsummer, all of our cars ended up with magnets on them, because they couldn't do the repairs until we got all of the graphics off.
Oh, okay.
And then one of them might have been the repairs for the squad that was damaged in that abduction and pursuit case.
Yeah, one was done at Emergency Automotive.
Yep, and that was, that was the, the repairs for the equipment damage to getting it put back on the squad.
So that's probably a reimbursed thing?
Again, it goes through the league, and then they, in fact, I got notice that they'd filed claim for restitution with the court on that.
The only way to know is ask, right?
It's a fair question.
With that, I'll approve that. The just and correct claims for the accounting period end in December 1st.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, second by Montgomery, to approve just and correct claims. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Okay. Council Committee reports, the only one I have is EDA.
And most of what we dealt with was brought to us tonight by Laura, so we're good there. I don't know.
Where'd she go? I need to go check.
I understand where she goes.
Yeah. I went blank here.
Right.
I will add that while the house that's on 300 East Minnesota Street did get taken down in the last day and a half, so that is, that's a good thing, so that will be now a new lot that the Housing Initiative will build on in the fall, that the Cannon Falls construction class will build, so that's kind of a, a fun little project that'll happen next year.
Nicole, are you with us?
Yes, sorry, I'm babysitting. So, yeah. Just wanted more to be able to answer any questions about the library budget, but also just off the top of my head, some things that we're doing at the library, we are doing the hat decorating contest again, so please come down. We are starting up, and you want to see, honey? We're starting up a new silent book club, so that premise, this is my nephew, so hi. The premise of the silent book club is that you get to bring your own book and sit and read with other people and tell the other people about the book that you're reading, and then that's a really good way to share what we like and get some good book advisories. So you don't have to sign up for it, it's just, I believe it's the second Tuesday of the month from 5:30 to 7:00. So that's one of our new programs, and check out our calendar for all of our other new things. And that's it, if you have any questions, go ahead and ask.
Thanks, Nicole. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Danny, you have anything? Bill, you talked enough?
No, I had enough.
Diane?
Monday at 6:30, we'll have a planning commission meeting. Thank you. Monday, 6:30, we will have a planning commission meeting on the Jablonsky pre-plat.
Laura, you have anything else?
I do not.
Chief?
I believe that the majority of our squad repairs are through the December 1st. I know there's at least one that will still be coming through, again, that's, you know, and just completing the, the stuff that was already in progress, they're just having to fit us into the schedule.
The, the car that was used by the ambulance department? Is that going to go into your service, or are we selling that?
It, it came back to us, and it's actually already been sold. We sold three fleet vehicles, and Council directed those funds back into our capital. I just contacted the state, the vendor for state contract on the squads and found out that they apparently opened up the 2023 order earlier this, late this summer for three weeks, and it's now closed. And so they will be taking 24 orders sometime this summer. Was not something that I was aware of or even anticipated, so I'm a little concerned that we're going to see the mileage getting up on the squads in the, you know, area that's going to cause us, you know, just operational costs and keeping them running. But that's just the way it is. They said they have some hybrids, and they're going to be comparing our previous order to those and then getting back to me. So I may, may bring that request, it would be looking at a hybrid vehicle as opposed to just a standard gas engine. Unfortunately, I would expect that the, the hybrid pricing that I've seen is usually more than just the, the regular gas price. So that's where I'm at, vehicles.
Chief, Sarah? Neil?
Just to piggyback on his conversation about how far out vehicles and equipment is, and I know Dan has run into that. is, and I know Dan has run into that, also about, um, buying a, a 24 and 22, because you can't get anything, uh, sooner, so, um, and I don't know what we have coming up on the Public Works, uh, as far as equipment, but we've got to look forward in order to get it in time, got to look forward out a couple of years, and I don't know when that's ever going to change, so, I don't know, we'll, we'll be talking more about that in the future.
Thanks, Neil. Laura?
Good.
Matt?
Uh, just want to say thoughts and prayers, uh, with Bill and, uh, your family, um, when I got the news of Mary Jill, um, I just wanted to say thank you for all of her service, because, you know, when she had the news, she could have stepped down, but she continued to serve this community all the way to the end, and I think that that is, um, I think that is worth noting, and it was, she was very funny and very musically talented, and we were lucky that we had her, so.
Matt, Bill?
Um, yeah. Mary Jill meant the world to me. Going to miss her. And the world is a little less brighter place with her gone. That's it, Steve.
Derek?
Yeah, um, my condolences to Bill and all of her friends and family, you know, when she got on the council, I literally didn't even know who she was, I hadn't seen her name, but over the last, uh, I think it's been four years, just sitting by her, talking to her, um, we Facebook chatted all the time, just about life and whatever, usually not even city stuff, and, uh, I'm really going to miss her, she was, she was a great person.
Thanks. Um, I'd like to say also to, about Mary Jill, that, uh, she was a recipient for all my off-color, off-mic jokes that I, I could think of when she was sitting here, and, uh, I think she served the community well, she served her church well, and she served the city of Cannon Falls well, so. With that, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Lundell, second by Montgomery, to adjourn, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion carries.